...borough council. Any business that may come before it. For call.
Councilmember Sokolaski?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Councilmember Leonard?
Here.
Vice President Tuttino?
Present.
President Griffin?
Here.
Mayor Frost?
Here.
Stand for prayer, council.
O divine master in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
President Nix flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't have any special announcements, but we got a public hearing for the 200 block of Washington Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick announcements. We did have a special meeting prior to interview consultants for 2018 and reappointments for boards and commissions for 2018 and a brief executive session regarding a personnel matter. And I'll turn it over to Mike Peters.
Numbers of council, we're now on the record. This is the allotted time and place set by borough council for the continued hearing on the application of Millennium Waterfront Associates LP concerning their application for conditional use under section 27-1503 of the Conshohocken zoning ordinance relating to building height for the property located in the 200 block of Washington Street typically known as Millennium Block A. The applicant first appeared before council on July 19th. At that time, this matter was continued. Following that initial continuance, the applicant has continued the hearings on August 16th, October 4th, October 18th, and on October 18th, it was continued until this evening, December 20th. By email dated December 16th, 2017, I received another continuance request. That continuance request has been consented to by all parties. It is therefore my recommendation that this matter be continued to a date certain, January 17th, 2018, your next voting meeting, and it will be held here at the public hearing room at Borough Hall. And if someone would like to make that motion, we can get the court reporter on her way.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Very good, thank you. The applicant has been encouraged to make it productive, so we shall see.
Omega?
Go ahead.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, Mr. Jack Cole, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Thank you. I don't know if there's a mix-up about me doing a slideshow or something tonight. I had no intention of doing a slideshow, but apparently I had put together some photos for this, but I just wanted to come in and say a few words on behalf of our outgoing mayor. I feel that 16 years warrants a couple of minutes of time to perhaps maybe just review some of the things that he has accomplished over the years. So having been a close partner and friend of his, I thought I'd love to step up and say a few words for him. Before I get to that, I would like to acknowledge the fact that our chief of police, Mike Euler, lost his father this week, and it'd be nice if we kept the family in our prayers. And I'd also like to mention the fact that we had a Conshohocken tragedy this past week when two young boys burned up in a fire. It had very close Conshohocken ties. Mr. Lukens' parents, both Dell and Gene Lukens, were firefighters in this town for many, many years. Gene Lukens being, I believe, perhaps the first female fire chief in this town. And I think they're having a big-time fundraiser for them at the Washington Fire Company, and if we could maybe put that out, that, you know, any attendance would be wonderfully accepted for the family. And keep that family in your prayers, because it's probably as tragic as it gets. So I just wanted to make us aware of that. And again, they lived in Conshohocken, they breathed Conshohocken, that he was raised in Conshohocken. So it'd be nice if anybody can help in some way, this family. I don't know if there is any help for them, but we can certainly try. So before I start, I did take notes. My head's going to be down, because I don't want to take up a lot of time and repeat myself, so if you don't mind, I'll be reading from a script here for the most part of this. And before I get to Mayor Frost, I wanted to take a minute and congratulate council on selecting our new borough manager, and I wanted to congratulate Stephanie Checo on the appointment, who became this borough's first female manager in the 167-year history. We had a manager as early as the 1920s and early 1930s, and we've had many managers since, but it wasn't until you guys put the first female into office. So by the time the news traveled all the way across the street to my shop, I immediately thought of 100 years ago. Upon the news of Mrs. Checo being appointed to the position, I couldn't help but recall another female appointment a century ago, back in December of 1917, okay? We had two banks back in town then. We had the First National Bank of Conshohocken, and we had the Tradesman's National Bank. And back then, the bank's cashiers were the most important person in the bank. They determined who got the loans, they determined what businesses could build and so on and so forth. And in 1917, the First National Bank was the bank of choice. We had a tremendous all-star lineup board of directors with the Lukenses and the Woodses and the Davises, but the Tradesman's National Bank was the B-bank, sort of. And the board of directors there in 1917 took a bold step by hiring a woman named Mary Getzfried to be the assistant cashier, which was unheard of. She was the first female assistant cashier in Montgomery County. It was reported she was the first female assistant cashier in the state of Pennsylvania. So it was big steps. Now, Mary Getzfried, the bank was sort of failing, but for the next quarter of a century, she made a lot of good decisions, took that bank through a depression and kept that bank alive and proved in going strong for the next 25 years. So I would certainly like to see Ms. Checo guide this borough for the next 25 years, and perhaps someday my grandchildren will be up here asking you questions, and hopefully we'll be going in a straight and positive direction. Okay, so with all that being said, I, just one little side note for you, Mrs. Checo, and that would be that I've always had this little saying that the biggest room in the world is the room for improvement, and certainly this borough can continually improve, and I hope you will take us in a positive direction. And that, my friends, brings me to Bob Frost. And again, I scripted it out, so I don't repeat, but I first met Bob sometime in the early 1980s, maybe '81 or '82. I think I coached both of his children in Little League baseball. And I should note, for you guys taking notes, that I was an outstanding coach. Outstanding, capital letters, okay? T-ball, you know. So we became really good friends a few years later, when he took my wife Donna out on a date to see a play at the Old Valley Forge Music Fair. I could feel a little breeze coming from the ears perking up in here right now. So that's another story for another time. For nearly three decades, Bob and I traveled throughout the area, going from one adventure to another, that included sitting in the Phillies dugout for a number of years, watching the games with press credentials wrapped around our necks. We particularly enjoyed having dinner in the press cafeteria, sitting with Harry Callis and Richie Ashburn and guys like Tommy Lasorda when the Dodgers were in town. We spent time in professional tennis matches held at Villanova University for a number of years, sitting courtside with press credentials, watching Jimmy Connors and Michael Chang and Andre Agassi and sitting 10 feet from his wife, Brooke Shields. It was kind of interesting. And I just remembered writing that, that there was actually a rent-a-cop, a guard, we were down in the press room having dinner, and a rent-a-cop questioned our fake credentials. And I thought, the goal of him questioning our fake credentials, I mean, they were fake, but the fact that he was questioning him was his whole other story. So we spent a lot of time at the Philadelphia Folk Festival, had a lot of good years hanging out backstage with people like Orlo Guthrie and Chris Kristofferson and Nemi Lou Harris and Jackson Brown and all of them, okay? And we loved going to the Kimmel Center in Philadelphia, watching sound checks and hanging backstage with numerous performers. And we had a lot of great dinners with people like Benny King and Darlene Love and Chris Montez and members of the Tramps and so on. And we had, Bob and I know each other very well, and we had some really, really fun times. But I didn't come to talk about our personal lives as much as I did is what he's done as mayor and what he's accomplished as mayor, and I think it should go on the record and on the minutes of what he did. Bob spent years serving our Little League baseball program. For years, Conshohocken had the premier league in Montgomery County. He served at a time when the league had little or no money. Heck, I can remember us cementing in a home plate under car headlights the night before opening day. These were the types of things we did. We had no field lights back then. One of the many reasons we had a snack stand and equipment building at the field was Bob's many hours of labor erecting those buildings behind the minor and major league fields. Tax dollars were not available for any projects like that in the late 1980s and early 1990s. So we built them stands, and we built them by hand. And Bob was down there night after night mixing cement, laying block for our Little Leagues. Long before he became mayor, and even after he was elected into office on the Fourth of July, you could find Mr. Frost out on Fayette Street at 5:00 in the morning, unrolling and installing the old wooden fence along the racetrack course, or giving up his entire Fourth of July in announcers booth in an effort to make each and every racer feel special as they approached the starting ramp. No tax dollars were contributed to Soapbox Derby back then, because the borough was broke, and I'll be saying that time and time again. For more than 20 years, Mr. Frost has been going to the Marshall Lee Towers to provide holiday meals, help serve holiday meals, or just providing many luncheons over the years. For more than 20 years, Mayor Frost has dropped in and taken over the bingo games, not just on an election year, but every year throughout the year. He would provide CVS gift cards and gift cards for lunches and dinners at the pub and boathouse, and hanging out, handing out $10 and $20 bills to participants at the bingo game, many of them on a very tight fixed income. Some years ago, an Elm Street grandmother, Sue Viola, she lived on West Elm Street in the Plymouth section of Cuny Town. Sue was raising her handicapped grandchild. She had her van stolen from the front of her house. In the van was an $800 stroller for the special needs child. The child could not leave the house without this stroller, okay? The only means of transportation to have to move the child around was the stroller. The grandmother was in no financial position to replace or purchase another stroller for the handicapped child. Within days and without fanfare, Mayor Frost handed her a check for 800 hours for the purchase of a new special stroller, so the child could continue to leave the house. Everything mattered to Bob, whether it was attending and supporting the soup kitchen at the Conshohocken African Methodist Church up at 8th Avenue, or going on national television telling the rest of the country what a great town Conshohocken is. In 2000, Mayor Frost was a key component in moving the fireworks to Suck Cliff Park as a member of the Susquehatchetanial Committee. There was plenty of opposition against the move from the A Field to Suck Cliff. The mayor insisted on Suck Cliff as the location. The following year, in 2001, the longtime sponsors of the fireworks dropped their sponsorship, and the borough was left without fireworks, nor could the borough afford fireworks. Mayor Frost and his committee raised the needed $20,000 to continue the tradition. Why did he move the fireworks to July 3rd and not the 4th? I don't know whether you still do it today, but if you have the fireworks on July 3rd, we would get 10% more fireworks for our money. Furthermore, having fireworks on the Fourth of July evening meant people had to get up and go to work the next day. By having them on the 3rd, everybody has off on the 4th. So it was an excellent move, and a move that has proved very fruitful to the members of the community. I hope we still negotiate discounts on our fireworks for having them on 3rd. A few years back, when ABC Nightly News came to Conshohocken, Mayor Frost went live with viewers throughout our country and represented our community in the brightest of bright lights. A job well done, Mr. Mayor. The car show that the mayor created, when the idea was pitched to council and the residents' voices were heard, saying, "Who's going to come to Conshohocken for a car show?" And today, Conshohocken hosts one of the premier local car shows in the Philadelphia region. But that's not the story. The story is that many food vendors have approached the mayor over the years to spend up to $300 to set up food tents and trucks on the street during the car show. The mayor's loyalty to the small businesses of the town, our delis and whatnot, he would never allow a food vendor at our car shows, ever, so that the delis and the restaurants could continue to get that business. He stuck up for the small businesses, and we could have brought in a lot of money on food vendors. He wouldn't talk about it, he wouldn't discuss them. The mayor declined all food vendors, stating that no food vendor is welcomed during any of our events on Fayette Street, stating that the businesses who pay taxes in this community, like Lenny's Deli and Pasta Via and Masterpiece Grill Scoops, deserve the business as one of Conshohocken's small businesses. The mayor went as far as to threaten one such ice cream truck with the arrest for showing up at the event, although he did allow Conshohocken Golden Bears to hold raffles and sell tacos in a bag in an effort to allow them to raise money for the program, okay? We didn't outsource the car show. Sometimes you can hire car clubs to come in and put it on. Mayor Frost believed that part of putting that event on was bringing volunteers together in the community, and it was important to him that we got community members involved to volunteer for these events. As a member of the Fellowship House Board of Directors, was one of the many board members who helped keep the doors open to the facility when we were in financial straits. Bob was always working, always thinking about our next event, what we needed to do to raise money, and what we needed to do to put events on at the Fellowship House. Some of yous won't understand that today, but when I was a board of directors, we were a fundraising crew, and just to keep the doors open. Over the years, Mr. Frost has supported our Boy Scouts at St. Mark's, showing up at Eagle Scout presentations with official borough documents to present them, or even in recent years, presenting collector's edition gold dollar coins to the only crowned Eagle Scout. No tax dollars were used in any of the presentations. It always seemed funny to me that when a new candidate running for office in this town puts together a brochure to run for some form of office, one of the first things on the brochure is how they support the fire companies. I often want to ask them, when you say "support the fire companies," do you send them a check once a month, or do you show up to serve the firemen coffee on the cold January nights when they're out fighting a fire? Do you attend the fires or even belong to the fire company? What do you mean "support them"? Mayor Frost has always supported the fire companies, and long before he was mayor, attending both fire companies fundraisers, supporting them with gift baskets for raffles, attending and contributing to things like Number Two's trivia nights, and just participating in the Washington Fire Company's Friday night dinners. Several years ago, Mayor Frost and the Special Events Committee partnered with an executive committee of the Washington Fire Company of Conshohocken. I specified washes of Conshohocken, not to confuse it with the Washington Fire Company of Delaware. Together, we set our sights on the construction of a 9/11 monument in Conshohocken. A member of the fire company had secured a steel girder from one of the towers. A stipulation of gaining access to the steel was to build an outdoor viewing area where members of the public would always have access. It had to be well-lit at night, along with a number of other stipulations. To construct this monument would have cost at least $40,000. Mayor Frost didn't want just to build a minimum requirement, but something we would all be proud of the rest of our lives. The monument on view at the Washington Fire Company cost over $85,000, and is both beautiful and touching. Mayor Frost and the Washington Fire Company President, Andrew Carlin, were the driving force behind this permanent monument, built so that we, the residents of this borough, would never forget one of the darkest days in this country's history. No tax dollars were used for the construction of this monument or the upkeep of the monument. It was all on washes and the mayor's special events committee. Mr. Frost didn't get involved in the community when he became mayor. He became involved in the community long before any election. Mayor Frost continually supported our veterans. Besides helping and supporting them on Veterans and Memorial Day, he would always help them out at fundraising events with beautiful raffle baskets, pretty much thanks to his daughter Jessica, in an effort to help them raise money for the post. In the 1990s, Mayor Frost was a key component on the Con-Vet Committee, and that stood for Conshohocken Veterans, helping raise some $150,000 to refurbish the Second Avenue Monument. That included a beautiful sculpture representing the family, a sculpture representing Conshohocken veterans and their families. No tax dollars were used for this project. We raised the money. I wonder if there's any aspect of this community that you haven't touched, Mr. Mayor, or left your thumbprint on over the past 40 years. I really could go on, I have another six or seven things to the point, to point out to the public, but of course, I think we all understand what Bob has done and been to our community. I'm proud to call Mayor Robert Frost a good friend, and so, my friend, it's time to step aside and allow our younger residents to step up to the plate and take a few swings. So you leave here in a week or two, saying goodbye to your time serving the community, a community that you love and served with high standards, and to you, I say a job well done. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you and members of your committees. As a former councilman myself and longtime member of the mayor's special events committee, I must take a minute and thank all of our community volunteers who have served on the mayor's special events committee over the past 20 years. I feel sorry for all the residents who never took the time to get to know Bob, especially the younger residents. History will tell us truly what a great mayor he is and was. So who did Mayor Frost touch in the end? Who did he serve? Well, anybody thinking of running for office should maybe take notes. He served our children in our youth leagues and Fellowship House. He served our seniors his years at Leach Towers participation, community fireworks, car show, Christmas tree lighting, public safety. Businesses wouldn't allow vendors to take any business away from them. Bob Frost is the most popular mayor in the history of this borough. When I say that, for 167 years, every burgess or mayor, the longest-serving term was eight years, two elections. Bob Frost has served 16 years, which is four elections. He has served longer than any other mayor or burgess in 167-year history. He supported our veterans. He was creative. He supported our Boy Scouts, our Halloween parade, Christmas tree lighting, arrival of Santa Claus, helping with many, many fundraisers that have benefited our community over the years. Many dedicated residents have come before you, and upon their departure, was labored as Mr. Conshohocken, and you so truly are Mr. Conshohocken. That, Mayor, is a job well done. We thank you for your service, and I want to thank you for the memories. The one other thing I wanted to mention was the fact that Mayor Frost opened the door up this year to Conshohocken residents spending a day at the Norris Town Zoo at no charge. He wrote a check out for $5,000 for a community day at the zoo. We had more than 1,000 residents show up. We hosted it on an Eagles pep rally day, where we could cheer the Eagles onto victory, and we had some cheerleaders there and Swoop and the band and so on. And because of Conshohocken's efforts at the zoo with the pep rally, the Eagles are now 12-2. And I'm wondering if Jeffrey Urie maybe gave you a call to thank you or anything of that nature, or give you some tickets or... But the reason I bring it up is, I was perhaps suggesting and maybe hoping that a borough with a budget of $10 or $11 million, we are perhaps the richest borough in the state of Pennsylvania at this point, thanks to the efforts of the lower end. But it's something to give back to the residents of this town and say, "Have a day on us." And the beauty of it is, we didn't need any police patrol, we didn't need any borough help, or streets blocked off, or cleanup people. It was a wonderful, wonderful day for the members of this community. Bob talked about next year, perhaps giving coupons for hot dogs and drinks or whatever, and that won't happen, but certainly a community takeover at the zoo, a community takeover day, is a real plus, a way to show the residents that they're getting something for their money, and it's something we really should think about continuing, so I think that would be nice. So, listen, with all that being said, I thank council for your time. I thank you, the residents, for listening to me this evening, and I think we owe Mr. Frost a big, warm round of applause for his years as mayor. I do have one quick request I want to stick around at the end of the meeting. I would love a picture of council, the mayor and the borough manager after the meeting. Thank you very much.
I'll check. Mayor Frost. Mayor Frost, Mrs. Frost and Jessica, if you could please come forward. We have a plaque and some flowers that we'd like to present to you. Jack, if you want to do your pictures now, we'll do the picture now.
I can do a picture now.
Okay.
Picture now, and you take two minutes of the meeting. Happy to do it. Okay, guys. Appreciation of your 16 years of serving in the borough of Conshohocken, and the great mayor, and I quit. And I think these flowers should go to your wife.
I was going to say.
Can we just do the council shot right now, real quick?
Sure.
Come on down.
Come on down.
Come on down.
Jack, we're much taller up there, you know.
Now, this is nice.
Okay, guys, here we go. Okay.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Jack.
And can I have one more pour for the... It's Christmas time. Okay. So, hey, can I have one more pour for the mayor, then we can go on with the...
Thank you, Mr. President. We will now move into the consent agenda items. Items for consideration are to approve and adopt the November 1st and November 15th meeting minutes, to approve the November-ending treasurer's report and accounts payable in the amount of $1,263,745.49, to adopt and approve the fiscal year 2018 budget, and adopt and approve ordinance 2017-9 to levy real estate tax for 2018 and fix the rate thereof, and to approve and adopt the Friends of Conshohocken Parks bylaws that were revised by Mike Peters and his team, per the direction of council on the December 6th meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C and D.
I will second it.
I got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Moving on to unfinished business, and Mike, I will pass this to you as necessary. The first item is to consider appointing board members to the Friends of Conshohocken Parks Incorporated. Counsel, on the December 6th meeting, we had to discuss the actual, that there would be three board members that need to be appointed for the bylaws to go into effect. You were asked to deliberate and come up with any specific individuals or names that you would recommend be considered for that appointment. Are you prepared this evening to put three names forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, it would be appropriate if you would make a motion to appoint those three individuals, and their specific names.
Oh, don't, won't they have to come in first and be interviewed, or no? This is separate from...
It's separate.
Okay, because it's a separate nonprofit entity?
Correct.
Okay. Well, Ms. Leonard and I have talked to, excuse me, several people, and we have three worthy individuals that are very interested in serving. One is Todd Camden, who is an attorney that is already involved as a trustee for the Mary Wood Park Trust. He is a resident on 8th Avenue. The second is Mayor Frost, whose resume speaks for itself.
Yes.
And the third is Robert Cauchy Jr. He's a local businessperson, Conshohocken, long-term, still plays basketball with the community. is authorized to sign the papers that we fill out. So, if someone could please make a motion to authorize Ms. Checo to incorporate Friends of Conshohocken Parks Incorporated.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And as part of that, we'll take care of the charity status.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item of business on the agenda is new business. It's consider authorizing the tuition reimbursement for Officer Eric Hall. Again, what was budgeted for in 2017 was $30,000 per the contract. What was spent to date is $13,062.64 per the contract. This is an approved expense, but the police department puts it in front of council for ultimate authorization. So, I would need a motion, if so inclined...
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I've got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And as part of that, we'll take care of the charity status.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item of business on the agenda is new business. It's consider authorizing the tuition reimbursement for Officer Eric Hall. Again, what was budgeted for in 2017 was $30,000 per the contract. What was spent to date is $13,062.64 per the contract. This is an approved expense, but the police department puts it in front of council for ultimate authorization. So, I would need a motion, if so inclined...
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I've got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
That is all the business, Mr. President, for this evening.
Okay, can I have some public comment? Come on, it's Christmas time. Say something. All right.
Carollers, anything?
If you can please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name is Deborah Chislowski. I live at 225 East Fifth Avenue, and I still would like to be considered for that other civil service board commission that's opening. If you need any recommendations, you may speak with Oscar Vance or anyone. He highly does recommend me for it, and several other police officers do from different communities. And I would be good at the job. I'm available, even though I just took a part-time security job, but it's going to be at the Torah Academy in Wynwood, and I'll be working there just 12 hours a week, but it won't interfere with anything I would have to do with the board or anything. And I'm going to consider going back to school and get my degree either in forensics, or I haven't decided yet, but most likely, forensics is my favorite. And I have enough experience, I think that I would be qualified for it if everybody would take a look at the application properly and see. And a lot of people do agree with it. Like I said, if you need recommendations, I can definitely get them for you from Oscar and everybody else from the county.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any more public comment?
Good evening, fellow councilmen, Donald Morris in 303 East Sixth Avenue, Conshohocken, PA. I would like to say thank you, Mr. Frost, for your years of service of our great community, and that Mr. Cole has touched every point of that discussion, and everybody in Conshohocken know where we can find you at, and I just hope that, like you said in the past, you're not going nowhere. I hope you stay involved with everybody in the community and come more often to the building and visit, and let us know you're still here with us. Thank you so much, and go Eagles!
Thanks, Donald.
Any more public comment? Mayor, I'm going to start with you.
Well, just I'd like to say thanks to everybody for coming out tonight. What Jack did, obviously, was a lot of work and a lot of time put into it, and he did stress it, but let me stress it even more. What I did, I did with the help of a lot of people. You have to surround yourself with good people, and it makes the job a whole lot easier and a whole lot of fun. You do it that way, the things will get done, it'll just bleed into the community. I have to this day, people call me and say, "Can I help you with anything you're doing?" And that's the idea, bringing the community together with some of these events. We didn't always look to be making money. If we had the people come out and it was a good turnout, we were thrilled. Zoo Day, we didn't make a dime on the zoo day, but as Jack said, 1,000 people, that's a good day for any event in this town. So, I say that to you people sitting here in the audience, please try to get the community involved with you. Don't try to do it on your own. Don't try to buy it and have it done for you. It's just not as good. So, I want to thank everybody that's helped me over the years. There's people sitting here tonight that would pitch in in a minute when I needed them. My family, of course, has been a big part of the group from the beginning. So, again, thank you guys very much. It's been a pleasure working with you, and we'll continue to do so. We're not leaving town. We're going to get involved in a few things, as we just appointed tonight the one, so that's a start. Again, thanks very much to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Callie?
I do want to thank Robert again, and wish everybody a happy holiday, and I think that in general, Conshohocken and council had a really great year. We got a lot accomplished, and I continue to looking forward to that in 2018 with everyone. So, thank you, and happy holidays.
Also, I want to thank Mayor Frost and his family, and I want to wish everybody happy holidays and a happy new year.
Well, I also would like to thank Robert and his family, and wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a happy, healthy 2018.
Thank you, Mayor Frost. On January 17th of 2016, we're going to have the Dog Park Committee come in and present to Borough Council the plans for the money allocated for 2018, and that would be for the vision of the Hain Selvati Park, as well as the existing, I think we're calling it the River View Riverside Dog Park. So, they'll be here on January 17th with a presentation. And happy holidays and the best in 2018.
Mayor Frost, thank you so much, especially for our Christmas time. It was done so well, and I wish everyone a happy holiday and looking forward to 2018.
Mayor Frost, I thank you for your friendship, your mentoring, your diversity of thought over the last two years. It sure led to some good discussions for the borough. That's really what we're about, is diversity of thought. Everybody has a different perspective, and with that perspective, we can do the right thing for everyone, and you actually helped that along, so thank you for that. And thank you, Jess and Joanne, because he couldn't do what he does without the support of you guys.
Jess is a...
Yeah, right? And I think that could be said for all of us. Our families are true support through all of us, and you certainly have a good one. Happy and healthy holidays, and I'm looking forward to the new year and all the work that will come with it. We'll be starting up the actual working piece of the comprehensive plan starting in January. We've been doing all the data collection. Now, it's time to really dig in and look at our ordinances and really identify the direction for the town as we move forward. So, looking forward to a lot of hard work in the next year.
Anything you say?
No. Why not?
I don't want you asking me. I just want to thank council and Mayor Frost for all of your guidance, all of your direction, not only for me personally, but for all of the administration. It was a very successful year, and we are very appreciative for everything that you do every single day. It is more than anyone could imagine, and it is time away from your regular schedules. So, thank you. And Mayor Frost, thank you for everything.
Oh, sure. Thank you for keeping the meeting short tonight. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Well, I got the desk. Excuse me?
I missed my section. I was in the middle of it.
Come.
I just want to say thank you also to Mayor Frost. On behalf of myself and the Country Courier, I approached you when I started the paper to insert a column, which you did selflessly. Thank you very much. And also, for my first issue, Ms. Joanne helped me with the distribution on that fateful morning, yes. Without even knowing who I was, she offered her help, and thank you. Thank you for your contribution to our paper. Thanks. Thank you, guys. Thank you, council.
I just want to thank you too, Mayor, for the great 16 years. I didn't know you were 16, the amount of years I know you. We were okay. You were okay with me. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and with that, I'll see you next year. Evening, ladies.[1796.62]